Ready? Good evening, everyone. The Walk Through Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, August 25, 2015. Welcome everybody back from their vacation. I hope everybody had an enjoyable summer. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:04 PM. Mr. Petrovsky, please do the roll call.
Mr. Alec.
Present.
Mr. Baltimore.
Mr. Daniels.
Here.
Mr. Kuplinsky.
Present.
Ms. Reed.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Thank you. Moving on to the invocation, Mr. Kuplinsky.
Thank you, Madam President. Let's bow our heads in a moment of silence. Remember those that are less fortunate than us in harm's way, and those that are sick, and those that are hoping for them to get better regardless of the situation. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Kuplinsky. Pl面具legionist, Mr. Alec.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no communications this evening. We'll move it on to courtesy of the floor. But before I do that, I just want to mention to the public that Harrisburg City Council Offices has moved from the lower level, in the basement, to the third floor, Suite 305. Moving on to courtesy of the floor, I'll start with my right. Anyone at the right would like to come to the mic, please do so now.
Thank you, Madam President. Rusty Diamond, Chairperson of the Harrisburg Environmental Advisory Council, and I wanted to announce a series of public forums that will be taking place in September and October. The title of the forums is Talkin' Trash and Trees, and the purpose is education for the public so people can learn more about the trash recycling program in the city of Harrisburg as well as the tree situation, what the rules and regulations and the services are related to trees. The dates for the meetings are Tuesday, September 15, at the Public Works Building, which is 1840 Paxton Street; Wednesday, September 23, Jump Street, which is 100 Cameron Street and the second floor; Monday, September 28, at the Camp Curtain YMCA, 2135 North Sixth Street; and the last one is Thursday, October 8, and that's back at the Public Works Building on Paxton Street.
What time are the meetings?
Six thirty to eight.
Okay. And you're involved with that? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Diamond.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
And Councilmembers. My name is Butts, Louis Butts. I'm the Committee Man for this district. And out of all the things that our city needs, like downtown needs more grocery stores, one thing that we do have in our possession is our National Civil War Museum. It really behooves me how we could totally not, sort of like missed the mark, when it comes to the relationship building between the federal government and our city government. Right now, it's very important that we make a stand on who we are and what we stand for in reflection to the national image of our Civil War heritage. It's very important that we acknowledge who and what we stand for. The reason why the Civil War Museum is where it is, there's a reason behind it, is that we won the Civil War. You may not believe it, but that is one of the reasons why Harrisburg, the city, was established. And the national level identified that. That was the reason why they put it up there, was to show relativity between Camp Curtain, which is uptown, which was the largest and greatest Union Camp in the whole campaign, and why we needed more tourists up here. That's why they put it up here. Now, tourism is one or two on our Pennsylvania industry, you know? Tourism is huge. We need to be a little smarter about our history and a little bit smarter on how we expose ourselves to the public. I feel as though now the National Civil War Museum is a platform of learning and of education. We cannot stifle that. We have, of all the resources that we have at our hands, I think we shouldn't stifle that. We need to exercise our ability to build more economic establishments in the Camp Curtain area, just like they do in Gettysburg. We can do the same thing. That's where our energies need to be focused on, substantiating what the Civil War Museum is, and helping them to be established and bring more tourism dollars in town. That's why they did it. Now, if we can't find a way to work together with them to make ourselves better because that's who we are, that's a problem that we have to look at. But as a man, I love the fact that my city won the Civil War. There's things that are possessive. We have flags that we can share with the nation that no one else can share. We have a history. And if you don't understand what the Civil War was, and all the freedoms in which we have because of that, I think then maybe education and freedom is not what you're promoting. You're promoting something else. So I am drawing a line in the sand, saying that I am for the Civil War Museum. I am for my heritage. I am for understanding why it's there for the people of Harrisburg. Anybody else that's on the other side, I think, really doesn't understand our national significance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? Anyone in the middle? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir. Take your time.
My name is the Reverend Frank Dutley, and I live at 1300 North Third Street Apartment 301. And I had been inquiring about trash. I have two garages up at 2246, and all these years, for about 20 years, and they let us put trash out because they said the man paid for the trash. Now, we can't put trash out because they didn't give us any cans. And I go down to the city, and I asked Rosemary Nye, and she said she was going to get back to me because it was some law on the books. And so I went yesterday, and she said that we pay for the trash, but we can't, they're not going to haul out the trash, and I don't understand it. And she said it was an ordinance that the city council made, and if they did make it, if you paying for trash, you supposed to be able to get your trash hauled. And she keep telling me it's a law. They made a law that said black people couldn't ride on the front of the bus, but it wasn't right. So the trash, people are still pulling this, putting this trash out there. It's 24 garages there. I haul the trash and takes it to the center right out of my own pocket. I'm going to stop doing that because the landlord pays for the trash, and up until 20 years until now, when they changed with this can stuff, they don't let us put the trash out there. So they're not supposed to put the trash out there, but everybody is still putting the trash out there.
Okay, sir. If you have a couple of minutes, you want to speak with Ms.?
2240.
Reed afterwards?
What's the street?
2246 is the address?
Yes, 24 garages up there. And I had two garages on the backside.
2246 Forrester Street or 24?
Susquehanna Street.
Oh, Susquehanna.
Yes, and we put trash out there for years, and we were paying for trash, and they tell us that the city council made an ordinance that they're not going, they're not supposed to pick up the trash, why they charging us for it.
Ms. Reed will meet with you after the meeting, sir.
Thank you.
We'll try to resolve your problem for you.
My name is Mr. Boyd. I believe in, they say, the democratic process. Once again, I must congratulate the City Council of Harrisburg because they've done the right thing, again. I have been in turmoil for 21 days while you were on vacation. I'm one of these kind of people that I will acknowledge when you've done right, and I will curse you when you've done wrong. It's a great opportunity, and it is a great thing to think about doing things correctly. I could have been in Dolphin County Prison right now. I believe in democracy, and I believe in treating people fairly. This evening, I'm going to say this, and I'm going to be firm with this, being friends of a nonprofit and a for-profit is a curse to the city of Harrisburg. Our main concern is the residents of this great city. Let's forget about that, because what's going to happen in our great city within the next six months to a year, we're going to need everybody here. If you don't know it, I do. Trash on North 14th Street and the 200 block, there is a lot that's almost as high as five, almost six feet tall. Congratulations, Community and Economic Chair. I wish she would walk with me once again, and let's continue what we started, to go in certain areas of this city and note that things need to be done. I know your budget is not the kind of budget that other cities have, but I still say one thing, if we work together within this city, we can make it happen. And once again, thank you very much. Good evening.
Anybody else to my right? Anyone in the middle?
I'm Daniel D. Graham, 217 North Second Street, here in Harrisburg. Welcome back, everyone, for your, from your vacation. Hope you had a great vacation. And as the other gentleman said, to bring more tourists into Harrisburg, I suggest, as I've said before, press the state and the US government for more Amtrak train service on all rail routes, on all present rail routes serving Harrisburg in all directions. Yes, we have great Amtrak passenger train service on the present, on the present Amtrak line, especially from Harrisburg East to Philadelphia, New York City, and through the New England States, and New York State, and other states. Great Amtrak train service, including some of the most scenic rail routes. Praise God. One specific suggestion I have for here in Pennsylvania, the train going west from Harrisburg, the train we have now is one train a day in each direction from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh, which is a beautiful, thrilling ride on that train, and the train's usually on schedule. But now I suggest increase that train service to provide an early morning train from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh, and then coming back, have a train leaving Pittsburgh in the late afternoon and arriving back in Harrisburg in the evening, so that you could make, so that, so that a passenger can make the Amtrak train trip from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh and back in one day. To stay overnight in Pittsburgh at one of the hotels is terribly expensive. I checked a couple of the hotel rates in Pittsburgh. It's outrageous. $220 a night, and some hotels, $192, $192 average price per night at the Fairmont Hotel downtown. It's outrageous. That's, and for some people, it's too much to pay for staying two nights or more in downtown Pittsburgh. So again, I suggest have additional train service so that you and I could make the Amtrak train trip from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh and back in one day for the, on the Amtrak train trip. Another issue, I am happy to see there are more police officers patrolling the streets here downtown on Second Street and other streets, in their cars, and on bicycles and on foot. That's good. I hope you keep on increasing the police patrols. That is good. Also, I suggest more police patrols at the intersections, and watch for drivers going through red lights, and drivers who fail to yield right of way to pedestrians when the walk signs are on. Thank you much. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Anyone else in the middle, please?
Good evening, Sheila Moore, 2033 Bellevue Road, Harrisburg.
Good evening.
Good evening. Couple of matters. I'm looking at your agenda, and you have an ordinance for the first reading, which is a lease purchase agreement between the city and M&amp;T Bank for $3,200,000. And I think what's important with respect to that ordinance, as well as the resolutions, is minority contracting. I've said it before, and I'd like to say it again, there are many, many, many opportunities for us to really have a more robust minority contracting process in place with respect to that. One ordinance, there's an opportunity there. With respect to the professional services contract with suburban lighting consultants, there's another opportunity. With respect to Resolution 61-2015, the resolution authorizing the city to enter into a professional services contract with HRG, Herbert, Rowland, and Grubik, that's an engineering firm that has done business in this county for many, many, many years, since the 70s, I believe. And I think it is incumbent upon us, each of us, I'm speaking to members of city council, but also to the mayor and to his staff, to ensure that any entity with which we do business has, in fact, a fully implemented minority contracting plan in place. I think that there are challenges around that here, and that it is time for us to really begin to exert some authority and control in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
James White with Leonidas Group Construction Company, and a longtime contractor in the city of Harrisburg. I'd like to address the city council to the extent in the following methodology that Sheila has suggested be implemented. I think when it comes down to the monies being spent in this city, obviously, our first premise should be to level the economic playing field, see that as much infusion of these funds and so forth that are coming in to upgrade the city actually land in those corridors where business of indigenous city citizens can be guaranteed involvement. I would like to see the language, for one thing, a little more enforced. I'd like to see a little more muscle behind it in the actual wording of how we involve, particularly contractors of color in this city, qualified contractors of color in this city, for the many projects. I give you, for instance, the street lighting project. We understand that there's a 15% goal. Goals are not as strongly suggested as the word supplies. You know, we want to make all the goals we can as a football team, doesn't necessarily mean we hit the score. However, if we strategize enough, then we're more guaranteed, if we analyze our opposition, to know where we're at. And I say this to say that in the years past, we used to have something known as a commitment sheet for those developers, for those general contractors coming in and involving themselves in the city, to clearly stipulate who it is that they intend to do business with, naming them, dollar value, scope of work, in event that they are awarded these contracts that the city is attempting to award to whoever agent or entity that they decide to pick. That does not mean that that holds them accountable if, in fact, they do not get the contract. But if, in fact, it is, we need some forbearing presence to know that there's going to be a guarantee. Many times, we get lip service through many situations, and it's followed up with something other than what we expected or determined that it should be by such entities. I just want to bring this up as a preemptive caution, as reinforcement to what she said, and to just be more specific, that a commitment sheet, a commitment sheet stipulating who they intend to do business with, scope of work, and the actual potential dollar value of those contracts, so that we know that once these contracts are let, it's no hogwash. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else in the middle? Anyone to my left?
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Hunt, and I live in the 1800 block of State Street. I imagine all of you, at one time or another, have had to go to the doctor or go to the hospital, and they give you one of those gowns that says "One Size Fits All," and all of us know, one size does not fit all. And that's how I feel about the new trash cans that we have. First of all, you have, I have one neighbor beside me, one person lives in that house. They have a 95-gallon trash can, all fine and good. Four people live in my house. I have a 95-gallon trash can. Two doors up from me, there's another family that there's eight people in that house, and they have a 95-gallon trash can. But when you go to ask for a second can, you're told that you're going to pay, I believe the figure is $95, plus you're going to pay double your trash bill. So your bill is going to go up approximately $500 that year, including the trash can. And I'm looking, and I was told that this is what other municipalities are doing. No, this isn't what other municipalities are doing. What they are doing is you can go and buy a tag for additional trash, and it costs you money for that, or they have special bags with the tags. Because if I need a second can one month, I may not need it 12 months, but yet I have to pay double trash for the whole year because I have a second can. That is not right. The second issue I have, I was looking on the website after hearing the mayor last night talking about the trees in the city of Harrisburg, about those trees being on private property. I thought it was very funny when I pulled up the official city website. It said here, "City office says, 'City must approve the cutting of any trees on city property.'" That's not what the mayor said. But if what the mayor said is what you are planning to do, you're going, okay, I have a dead and dying tree on my property. It's scheduled to be cut. Do I have the option of, okay, I've got to pay for this permit. I've got to pay for this tree to be cut down. Do I have the option to tell you, I don't want you to put another tree on my property? And while I was on the computer, because once I get on the computer, I get carried away, I saw this Harrisburg City Tree Inventory Summary Report dated November 2013. I couldn't find the one for 2014. If you have one, I'd like a copy of it. But I also noticed on here, they covered something that the mayor didn't address. I'm sorry I missed the meeting. I didn't know it was there. I would have been there. Hardscape, because a lot of these dead and dying trees have caused the sidewalks to be ruined. What's going to happen there? Is this, okay, the city planted a tree on my property that destroyed my sidewalk. Am I also going to be responsible for paying for the repair of a sidewalk that is caused by a tree that I never asked for? And this report here talked about ways of covering the sidewalk up and stuff. We can't put temporary repairs on sidewalks in the city of Harrisburg, because right now, we have an issue with lighting in Harrisburg. In front of 1838 State Street, we have been calling for months and months and months to get that lights put there. That's a very dangerous sidewalk, because it's torn up, there's gravel in certain areas. We can't, we need to have these things fixed. I know we're in the midst of a comprehensive plan, and we have a lot of things in Harrisburg to fix, but I'm going to tell you right now, number one on my list is the streets and the potholes. I'd like for one of you to take your car down Apricot Alley between 19th and 18th Street in the dark, where you can't see that area, or go up Lynn Street. One of your former city councilpersons told me when they went up Lynn Street, "Why'd you let it get this bad before you told me? My car got in the middle, and I didn't know whether to go forward or backwards." That's how bad it is. But I mean, trees are very important. However, we need to deal with these potholes in these streets first. That's our number-one priority. And then with the new office that we have, I'd like for him to come up, go to 18th and Walnut, and go up to maybe 20th and Walnut, and tell me why. The city can cut the grass at Reservoir Park, where you can see it from State Street, but parts of the park where you can't see from State Street, it hasn't been cut all year long. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Hunt, if you have a few minutes, Ms. Reed's going to meet with you afterwards.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And address some of your questions. Anyone else to my left? Hearing none, we'll move on with the agenda. Approval of Minutes, Approval of the Legislative Session Minutes of July 7, 2015. Approval of the Special Legislative Session Minutes of July 9, 2015. And also approval of the Special Legislative Session Minutes of July 14, 2015. Councilmembers, are there any questions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. I have property moved. May I have a second?
Second.
Property moved in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, please.
Please say aye.
Okay. All in favor.
Oh, aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I didn't hear anybody else.
Brad speaks for us.
Oh, no. You all have to acknowledge. Reports of committees? We have none. Ordinance for first reading, Bill 10, 2015. Mr. Petrovsky, please read that to record.
Bill 10 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Ms. Williams, and it's an ordinance authorizing execution of a lease purchase agreement between the city of Harrisburg, Manufacturers and Traders Trust Company for the purpose of financing up to $3,200,000 of the cost of upgrading the city's streetlights and other exterior lights, and to monitor and guarantee cost savings from the upgrade project in accordance with Act 39, known as the Pennsylvania Guaranteed Energy Savings Act, 62 PACS Sections 3751-3757.
Thank you. That would be placed in Public Works Committee. Ordinance for amendment? We have none this evening. Ordinance for final passage? We have none. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution 56, 2015. Please read it out to record.
Resolution 56 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Alec. It's a resolution authorizing application to impact Harrisburg to fund up to $3,000,000 It's a resolution authorizing application to impact Harrisburg to fund up to $3,600,000 of the cost to upgrade the city's streetlights and other exterior lights, and to monitor and guarantee cost savings from the upgrade project in accordance with Act 39, known as the Pennsylvania Guaranteed Energy Savings Act 62 PACS Sections 3751 through 3757.
That also will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 60 of 2015.
Resolution 60 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving professional services contract with Suburban Lighting Consultants, Incorporated, Suburban, to provide continued professional consulting services for the city of Harrisburg LED streetlight upgrade project, or the project.
Okay. That also will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 61, 2015.
Resolution 61 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a professional services contract with Herbert, Roland, and Grubik Incorporated, HRG, to provide design, engineering, permitting, revenue, and utility coordination bidding services, and the construction management inspection services for the city-owned bridges, HBG-10 and HBG-23, the project.
That would be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 62, 2015.
Resolution 62 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Reed. It's a resolution approving fourth proposed 2015 budget reallocations.
That would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Resolution 63, 2015.
Resolution 63 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Baltimore, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution authorizing the city engineer to submit applications for traffic signal approval to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, or PENDOT, for overhead warning devices at various capital area greenbelt trail crossings, and a traffic signal upgrade to the existing traffic signal at the intersection of Linglestown, SR 0039, and Industrial Road Ramp L.
That would be placed in Public Safety Committee. Resolution 64, 2015.
Resolution 64 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, with the Dolphin County Conservation District, DCCD, for erosion and sediment pollution control, municipal separate storm sewer systems, general conservation, and West Nile virus control.
That would also be placed in Public Works Committee. Resolution 66 of 2015.
Resolution 66 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Reed. It's a resolution appointing Wayne Martin, Erica Regalado, and Bruce Weber as the city of Harrisburg's designees to file the annual state liquid fuels tax actual usage report online.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 66? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 66 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 67.
Resolution 67 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution approving the budget established for the production and development of the Capone Festival for 2015.
Any questions or comments, council members, on this? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 67 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 68.
Resolution 68 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Reed. It's a resolution certifying that certain grant requirements and objectives of a peer-to-peer grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, or DCNR, have been completed.
That would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to old business, council members, any old business? Moving on to new business, council members, any new business? Start with Mr. Baltimore. Do you have anything?
None.
You're not going to sit a meeting up? Okay. Ms. Daniels?
No, we'd just like the administration to encourage its staff to get our resolutions out. We, you know, we started, we all came back refreshed, and a lot of our bills are not ready. I'm particularly disappointed that they drafted a resolution back in June, sent it up. It's a simple resolution asking the state legislature to support the anti-discrimination bill for LGBT folks that is in the legislature, and we didn't get it before we went to recess. It wasn't here again. There's no objectionable component to this. I believe all council members support our LGBT community. I believe the mayor does as well. So the only thing that's really preventing this from happening is the laziness. So I would really like to see the things that the administration and council don't disagree on to come forward very quickly and very easily. There's nothing controversial about this. So if you could please get your staff to do their job, so I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Koplinsky.
While I won't say comments as harshest, Councilwoman Daniels, I will say that if a councilperson puts a bill together, it should have every right to be able to be voted on by this council in a timely manner.
Thank you. Ms. Reed?
Yes, I have a couple of things. There will be a Public Works Committee meeting on 9/1, which is Tuesday, at 5:30. As you can see, there's a lot of things in Public Works Committee. We'd like to move on some of these items in our committee, so we'd like the public to come out and hear what's going on with especially the M&amp;T grant and the streetlight, street lighting. And that will be again on 9/1, 2014. And we also have 2015. Yeah, we're going to go back a whole nother year and do this all over again. Not. As the chair of the Environmental Advisory Committee did advise, is that we will have the trash trees and talk town hall meetings. This is an opportunity for all those to have questions, have concerns, have ideals, want to know exactly what's going on with your trash, with your trees, what's going on. We've taken, it took us all summer long to actually get these dates narrowed down so that everybody can be in conjunction. And I'm going to repeat the dates for you again. Tuesday, September 15, at the Public Works Building, 1820 Paxton Street. Wednesday, September 23, at Jump Street at 100 Cameron Street. Monday, September 28, at the Camp Curtain Y on Sixth Street. And Thursday, October 6.
Eight, she said.
October, no, Thursday, October 6.
She said eight. Okay.
Yeah, I got eight.
Eight is eight.
I got eight, too.
We have eight. Ten eight.
She said October the 8th, at Public Works Building.
Well, I'm looking at it on my email. It says Thursday, October 6. Was it Thursday, October, is that a, is that a Thursday?
It was corrected.
Was it corrected later? I apologize then.
Eighth is a Thursday.
It'll be Thursday, October 8. I stand corrected. Thank you.
That's a public works.
At the Public Works Building, 1820 Paxton Street. Also under new business, I just want to bring up about the trash cans. I hear a lot of complaints about the trash cans. And let me explain to you, for three and a half years, I have walked through this city, even before I came on council, and that was one of my number-one focuses, is to get the city clean. And in order to get the city clean, we had to do one thing, get a trash can in every home. So rather than the media and everyone else sitting around complaining about the size of the trash can, I want you to really remember, last year, when I took a trash picture of the month, every day for 30 days in different areas of this city, the reason why I was able to do that, because those places did not have trash cans. In the last two to three months, since those trash cans have been out there, what I have noticed, in the same areas where I took those pictures at, I don't see trash. Children are not walking past trash all day long. There is very little litter on some of these city streets because of the trash cans. We clearly understand, with the help of this administration and Public Works Department, that no one size does not fit all. However, no size doesn't fit the city at all. And that's what we had before. We had no trash cans. So standardizing our trash cans is very important. Why are the trash cans 96 gallons? Because it will hold six, six bags, and that is what our ordinances require. We, you're allowed to put out six, no more than six bags. That's what you should be putting out. And when you say a household has eight people in it, when my family was up, there was 15 people in my house. You know what I had? I had less than a trash can. That 96-gallon totter was not even close to being full. You know what I had? I had five different containers of recycling bin. I had five containers of recycling bins. I actually have two of the large recycling bins, because they gave me an extra one, because I recycled that much. And when that week came out, because they were there for a week, at the end of the week, I had five containers of recyclables, and my 96-gallon totter wasn't even full. So we had, it could have been 15 people in the house that week. So the 96-gallon totters are standardizing the way and the uniform that the city looks. But I want you to be very, very, very clear, rather than driving down 17th Street and seeing bags and bags and bags and bags of trash, I see black and blue. And I'm going to be very happy to tell you, I'm very happy to see black and blue, because people are recycling more, people are paying attention more, people are complaining, saying that the trash cans are smelly. I put a watermelon rime in my trash can and forgot that it was, it was on Tuesday, and forgot. Went out to put some more trash in there, two days later, maggots all over the place. Didn't smell a thing. Not a maggot on the outside of the trash cans. The trash cans are beautiful. They seal completely. The city of Harrisburg did a wonderful job in selecting the trash cans. If you need a smaller trash can, Public Works is doing their very best to accommodate those that need smaller trash cans. But as a whole, standardizing for the first time in the history of this city, how their trash is collected and picked up, I think I give kudos to the administration and all those that work tirelessly behind the scene to get those trash cans out, because it's very important going forward. No one size does not fit all, but we do have other trash cans, and there will be adjustments made. But no trash can, a trash can is better than no trash can any day. And if you have any questions or concerns, like I said, we've even set up town hall meetings to even further discuss how we can fine-tune the program. No, it's not perfect, but it's way better than it was six months ago.
Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, just like to announce that we'll have a Budget and Finance meeting on Thursday of this week, on the 27th, at 5:30, up for discussion Resolution 62, Resolution 68, and we will be doing mid-year budget review.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
No, I just want to make an announcement. There's a new restaurant happening, the Brothers Pizza, up on Division Street, opened up. So that's for anyone that lived in the uptown area, and that's to give a plug to Brothers Pizza.
Cool. Okay. And I have one announcement, a couple of our residents in the city of Harrisburg, a couple of the parents came to my home last week and asked me to announce that there is going to be a St. Jude Walk and Run to End Childhood Cancer, September 26, at the Capital City Mall, 3506 Capital City Mall Drive. Registration's at 7:00, and the walk starts at 8:00. Questions interested in volunteering, contact Brittany Clark at 800-303-5937. Her email is brittany.clark@stjew.org. Please come out to 2016 St. Jude Walk and Run to End Childhood Cancer. Thank you. Hearing no other. New business? May I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Meetings officially adjourned.